Good morning, everybody. The November 14th, 2023 work session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all electronic devices remain in silent mode. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolution to be introduced this morning.
Resolution number 5023, resolution agreeing to establish an additional early voting center at the Broadneck Branch of the Anarundel County Public Library.
Thank you. There will be a public hearing on resolution number 50-23 during our regular meeting on November 20th, 2023. We're going to move ahead with discussion of bills this morning. The first bill up is Bill Number 79-23, An Ordnance Concerning Purchasing Disposition of County-Owned Real Property. I'll turn this over to the administration and let you introduce your reps.
Hannah Dyer, DCAO. Joining me at the table are Marnie Watson from the Office of Real Estate and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So Bill 7923 proposes changes to the surplus and disposition process for county property. And our goals with this bill are twofold. We wanted to create a clear process and also streamline the process and find efficiencies. So I think, Laura, all of the council members have now received a flow chart outlining the process. And this process maintains the same categories of disposition that currently exist. The biggest change is consolidating council approval of property as surplus with council approval of the proposed disposition. So as you all are familiar with at this point, right now, there's a two-step process for council approval in the surplus and then disposition stage, and our proposal is to consolidate both of those at the end of the process. But in recognition of that change, we've also built into our proposal additional notice to the council member representing the district, the relevant district for the property. So we have that built in in two stages of the public notification process ahead of going to council. Another bigger change is increasing the dollar value for the thresholds at which real estate must get more than one appraisal. Currently, that threshold is set at, or the threshold to receive two or more appraisals is set at $25,000, and our proposal is to increase that to $100,000. And I'll just note that that current threshold hasn't changed in, I believe, over 30 years. So it's been a really long time. And then the other changes, I don't think are quite as significant as the two that I've described. They are outlined in that flow chart that I mentioned earlier, and they relate more to our second goal of clarifying the process. So some examples are adding time limits for the validity of an appraisal, which currently under code, there isn't a time limit, but practically, we all know that it's reasonable to have a time limit on that. And then also specifying which adjacent owners must receive public notice. Right now in code, it just says that real estate has to notify the adjacent owners. And I believe in the past, we've had some situations where there's some uncertainty as to what adjacent means. So we've kind of defined which owners exactly are to receive those public notices. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all. We can answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the admin sharing this and giving us time to kind of review and digest it. I know I did not give comments previously, so this will be sort of my first take on this, and I apologize for the lateness. That said, I like that you're trying to streamline this process, and I think that's good. The concern that I have is I don't want to wind up in a position with surplus property where I feel like we are sort of a rubber stamp, which I feel like we are for many other things. And so because of the two-step process that exists now, we are not that, right? First, you have to come to us, and it has to be declared surplus, and then you can go out and get the bids and do everything, and then it comes back to ratify that. If this process moves forward the way you all have laid it out, it seems to me by the time it gets to us, we will really be asked to just sort of bless the final product. And I am concerned that it's going to come to us from the administration as we've got this buyer, they're on the hook, they're over here, you know, they're ready for all this to move forward, and you guys are it, and you really just need to check the box. And if you don't check the box, it's going to create a whole host of problems. What are the ramifications if we were to say no at that point, right? Because I know what it is now, but I'm curious what that looks like in the process. I want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up in a position where we're really neutering the authority that we have over surplus property by going through this process. That's my first question.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question and something. We've discussed a similar concern with some of your colleagues as well ahead of this work session. So under this proposal, council still obviously has the power to reject a proposed surplus and disposition. As you mentioned, the stakes, I guess, are a little bit higher, right? Because we're delaying all of it until the end instead of having those two check-ins with council. So it really falls to us, I think, to the administration and to future administrations, to make sure that we're including the council member throughout the process and not just when we bring the actual resolution to you at the end. Because it does, you know, there's time and money, especially from the Office of Real Estate, invested throughout the process, particularly getting the appraisals, but that's not the only point. And so it really falls to us to make sure that we, you know, everyone's on board with what we're doing throughout the process so that we don't get to the end and have a product that council is not supportive of. And that was also the reason, like I mentioned, to build in the public, into the public notice, the requirement that we also have to notify the council member representing the district, which is not currently part of the notice process.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
Thank you. So would this be similar to what we do with like the lease that we just approved for Godenzia recently, where there is a provision in there or any other contract that says, subject to council approval? So in the event that the council was not to approve it, the buyer would understand that was a sort of condition that has to be met that has not been met?
Yes, absolutely. And thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, of course.
Because that's also a really important point, is that even, even though under this process, we would be able to continue to move forward through administrative approvals at certain points, it is always contingent on final approval by the council.
Okay.
So again, like we can get through the entire process, and if we had put together a package, a proposal, that council was not supportive of, then, you know, it's all undone. It's rejected, even though we got through those administrative checkpoints ahead of them.
Can I ask another question?
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, switching gears. So the threshold for an appraisal, from 25 to 100, what's the rationale there? What's the current sort of time and expense cost? And I use that as both, because it's not just the dollars, it's also the time on the appraisal that you all are finding you're spending on these appraisals. I'm just trying to think, what's the cost benefit? How did you land at the $100,000, and why does that seem to make sense?
Yeah, so before I turn it over to Marnie to see if she can maybe add some additional details from real estate's perspective, we did, in the process of putting this proposal together, we looked at surpluses and dispositions going back to, I think, 2008 and kind of the values associated with each of those. And there was kind of a natural, you know, difference between those that are very low value, under $100,000, and those that are more significant. So.
Right now, currently, we're spending roughly right around $5,000 for an appraisal. So we thought, we're rarely getting anything appraised for such a low amount. So the idea was that, we looked at it and we're like, real estate has gone up quite a bit in the last 20 years, and we hadn't accommodated for that. We were still ordering $10,000 worth of appraisals for something that we were, end up selling for like $10,000. So the idea was that we're spending, and we're getting, we're passing this on to the buyer. But the problem is, is that they're not expecting to double the price of a property that they thought they were going to get for $10,000, because we've already spent $10,000 just in appraisals. So that's why, that was kind of the thought process.
Follow-up? Thank you. No, I appreciate that, and that's a good thought process. How do we do, is the appraisal in-house, or is that something that you're contracting with an outside entity to do?
We do contract that out.
And is that a competitive bid for who is doing the appraisals, or is that sole source? Like, how do you all do that?
I'm not really, I can't answer that question, because I'm really kind of new to the process.
Okay.
I know we have, I know which appraisers we use. How we got to that, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious.
But I do use the same group of appraisers.
Yeah, I'm just curious. $5,000 seems very expensive for an appraisal.
I agree. When, I'm from, you know, private, and I look, when I first started seeing these bills come through, I was like, gosh, that seems really high. I didn't pay that much when I bought my house. But these are, that's kind of just what I've kind of walked into. And it's a good question, because I've been asking that myself with my colleagues.
I just.
And we can follow up and get that information. I know sometimes for certain services, perhaps like this, we have pre-approved lists of vendors, and that may be the case here, but we'll follow up and find out for sure.
Absolutely. I'll just tell you, in my other world, we get residential appraisals all the time. They're like 500 to 700. And I've had commercial appraisals done for like large commercial buildings, and even those are not $5,000 to do. So that just seems like an awfully high cost, and I get it, if that's what we are paying, that makes a lot of sense to raise this threshold up. When you looked at the 2008 to present data that you were reviewing, what percentage were surplus properties that were under 100, and what percentage were over 100, if you know? And if you don't, you can get back to me. This isn't like on the spot.
Let me see. I mean, I'm happy to share the list with you afterwards. Just doing a quick scan. So it looks like, and I don't have, I don't want to guess, so there were one, two, three, four, five that were over $100,000, but I don't know how many are here, like 20 maybe?
Yeah.
We'll follow up with the full list.
The majority are under $100,000.
Yes.
Got you. Okay. Yeah, and, I don't know, I would like to see that list just to kind of dig into it a little bit more, but thank you.
Any other questions for Bill 7923? Mr. Volkey seemed to ask all of them forth. That's fantastic, fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for your diligence this morning. We're going to move along. Thank you so much, ladies. We're going to move along to Bill 80-23, An Ordnance Concerning Anarundel County 10-Year Solid Waste Management Plan. I believe there's a slide presentation. Mr. Hunt, you can introduce your panel, and we'll get started when you're ready.
Madam Vice Chair, can I just add, for anybody that's paying attention, there is a meeting packet posted online that includes that, the flow chart that Ms. Dyer referenced, as well as the presentations that you're going to see on screen today.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law and Rhodey Holdhouse from Department of Public Works. So state law requires the county to update its solid waste management plan every 10 years and review the plan every three years. Bill 8023 repeals the 2013 solid waste plan and adopts the county's 10-year solid waste management plan that will cover the periods from 2024 through 2033. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Holdhouse to run through the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members of the county council. My name is Rhodey Holdhouse, and I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works for the Bureau of Waste Management Services. With me this morning again are Kelly Kenny, Office of Law, Steve Krajcek, and Rich Bowen, both from our Bureau of Waste Management Services. Thank you for the opportunity to present an executive summary of this big document this morning, the 10-Year Solid Waste Management Plan for the years 2024 to 2033. Next slide, please. The requirement to do solid waste planning is in state law and regulation. Our current plan was adopted in 2013. It's been amended four times. Our new plan will be for the upcoming 10-year period. It must convey that essential waste management services are available within our porters. Adopting the plan is not a commitment to funding programs or facilities. In fact, the cost of maintaining services and programs or funding new programs remains part of the annual budget process. Next slide, please. All local government plans have a similar look and feel because they are organized into chapters required by Maryland regulations. For this morning's presentation, I'll share highlights to summarize each of these five chapters, goals, background, systems, assessment, and plan of action. Next slide, please. Chapter 1 includes goals and policy statements. I'm sharing some highlights this morning. The first two bullets, to collect, transport, and manage waste safely and efficiently, and provide full service, solid waste and recycling acceptance facilities, includes the landscape of both public and private facilities to meet the needs within the county. The third bullet, maintain programs that promote waste reduction, reuse, and recycling over disposal, really speaks to our county programs, compliance with the Maryland Recycling Act, expectations of our residents, and very long-term goals to conserve our landfill capacity. The plan must be consistent with the general development plan. In fact, the Healthy Communities section of Plan 2040 has policy statements for waste management and recycling activities. So on this slide, I'm just featuring Healthy Communities, .9.1 as an example. Next slide, please. Chapter 2 includes general information on Anarundel County, including population and projected growth for the 10-years period. Incorporated municipalities, we have both the City of Annapolis, which has its own DPW and services and fee structure for its residents, and the town of Highland Beach, where residents pay our county charges and receive county services. All other inventory information, such as federal and state facilities and zoning and land use information, is in Chapter 2. Next slide, please. The third chapter in the plan is the countywide comprehensive review. It covers county programs and facilities and certain private facilities in the county that are required to hold state-issued refuse disposal permits. These include transfer stations, rubble landfills, and medical waste handlers, as well as scrap tire processors. Also referenced are significant private facilities outside of the county that are used in our county programs. Next slide, please. This is a busy slide. I apologize for all the text, but I think I just wanted to highlight a few things. Every year, the Maryland Department of the Environment publishes a report that collects information from regulated facilities, local governments, and businesses. This slide shows actual data in the most recent MDE report from the network of facilities that handled almost 1.2 million tons of solid waste from our county in calendar year 2021. So I think the takeaways here are three. Materials move within and outside of the county's boundaries. So that's commerce. More gets recycled than disposed, which is what we've always been looking for, so that's good. And I think you can get a sense that private facilities are really designing their businesses around recovered raw materials. So that's important as well. Next slide, please. I couldn't come up here without talking about some of the things that we're proud of. So I want to give these guys a lot of credit for these things. So over the past 10 years, we've done a lot of things to strengthen the present system, so those are mentioned in Chapter 3. Curbside recycling, we're very proud of. We're using carts with lids and wheels, and campaigns to recycle more often and recycle right. And it means we're capturing paper, plastic, metal, and glass that the industry wants. So that's a success. We also have drop-off programs that continue to grow to meet our residents' needs. One program I'd really like to highlight this morning is our participation in the durable medical equipment reuse program. For a couple of years now, we've partnered with the State of Maryland, who built a facility to refurbish and sanitize things like wheelchairs, scooters, crutches, walkers, and many other medical items. We collect these at our central recycling center. They're from our residents. They're picked up and transported to a refurbishment facility, and there they go to persons in need. So that's not really recycling, but it's a reuse, which is even better than recycling. And we got a nice letter because that program really makes an impact on folks' lives. Under the CIP program, we expanded our composting pad. This was in response, and you've heard me up here before, some of you have, to closures of private facilities in our area as we've amended our plans over the years. But we built a new facility of our own, we outsourced its operation, and in the process saved millions of dollars, but also engineered more security for our program. Next slide, please. Since 2017, we transitioned to the Cell 9 disposal area at the southern portion of the landfill property at Millersville. That's one statement, but it really encompasses many different capital and operational projects to finish the Cell 9 area, cap it, builds, I'm sorry, Cell 8 area, cap it, build Cell 9 infrastructure, like roads and ponds, and then construct the first and second phases of Cell 9. In addition, we had to renovate a lot of infrastructure to match the new life of that facility as well. So things that were built in the 1990s weren't replaced, they were refurbished. The landfill gas electricity facility has exported more than 285,000 megawatt hours of electrical energy in the last 10 years and contributed $1.2 million to the Energy Loan Revolving Fund, which is used for other county conservation and energy projects. We also have a grant-funded rooftop solar project at the Millersville Maintenance Shop, and the work to permit the private solar development on the leased Glenburnie landfill is ongoing. So we're hoping to see that finished in the next year or so. And I guess finally, there was nothing good about COVID, but I have to mention how proud I was of our whole team of employees and contractors who kept all of our services going. You know, it wasn't easy, and most of you know that, but with more customers to serve than normal for folks being at home, working from home, and going to school at home, a lot of the patterns of life shifted, which led to increased reliance on our programs. I'll never forget that all the work that the folks did to make that happen. So that's, that's one of my proud moments as well. Next slide, please. So Chapter 4 is the assessment of our system, and our system has capacity, maybe adequate's not the best word, but that's what we're, we're trying to achieve here, adequacy, for the next 10 years. So we have collection either at the home or via drop-off. We have recycling and disposal outlets that should last for the long term, and we have adequate capacity to handle special waste types that are required to be handled under this plan. And then we have some planning studies, and you've all heard me talk about these in the context of the annual budget process, but I wanted to give a little bit more background and updates. We have our recycling center planning study. So during our peak during COVID, we handled more than 900,000 customer visits. So that's, that's a lot of people coming to our facilities. We've had the same number of facilities since the population was around 382,000 souls, and now it's over 600,000. But before we look at new facilities, we want to look at garnering efficiencies with our current facilities. And I know there are things to be done better, and that's why we're taking that hard look at the way we do business to make those improvements over time. There's interest in food scrap collection from the home, from some customers, from the last council, there was a resolution, and also from some of the work we've done with transition committees. So we've invested in a study, and you've heard this before, we should have those results soon, to understand what a new service may look like, what it would cost in terms of fee increases, because we are an enterprise. And then in the short term, we plan to pursue capacity expansions in Cell 9 through a modification of our state-issued permit, but we're also studying intermediate and long-term opportunities to maximize, you know, the use of the Millersville landfill over the next decades. We're committed to a long-term roadmap for our successors to follow. So that's one of the hardest things about this job is the planning for these types of facilities, but it needs to be done. So we're moving on that in the context of Plan 2040. Next slide, please. So I wanted to give a little bit of, you know, some more data points for our assessment summary. As we sit here today, our permitted landfill capacity with all the other programs that I mentioned, composting, recycling, has an estimated life of 25 years. So we're not in a crisis, but we think we can permit a modification to the current Cell 9 to gain another 50% more capacity in the same area, which takes us even beyond that 25 years. So we'll be working on that. Private transfer stations, there are two large transfer stations that are privately owned in our county, and they both have time horizons well beyond the 10-year planning period as well. And the private regional materials recovery facility, that's really sorting paper, plastic, metal, and glass that we're collecting in yellow carts, containers, and bins, handles our material as well as Howard, Frederick, and Carroll Counties, as well as Baltimore City and City of Annapolis. It remains available, and in fact, a new facility is being built in Elk Ridge. So we'll have a new state-of-the-art facility in our region for years to come. So that's encouraging. We also have composting capacity of our own and a network of other facilities in the region that can handle the other waste types that need to be handled under this plan. Next slide, please. So sort of bringing it all together is Chapter 5, the Plan of Action, and I think you can say it in just a few bullets. We're going to continue the current level of service, subject to funding, and we're going to consider service enhancements, subject to funding, and also state law changes, because there seem to be, you know, pretty active general assembly sessions these past few years looking at these areas. And of course, we've updated our plan over the years for certain things that have already happened. And we enumerate some of our plans in 12 core priorities, and I guess I tried to group them, so there were just a few bullets to read, but zero-waste concepts really factor into our program with recycling and technology, environmental protection, constituent outreach is always important to us because it's like steering a cruise ship, right? Trying to get 170,000 households, 171,000 households now to use our programs and to use them correctly. And then obviously affordability is a big consideration, since we're an enterprise and everything's based on fees, and making the landfill last longer is important as well. Next slide, please. So there's quite a few possible enhancements that are listed on pages 5-2 to 5-24, so I just wanted to talk about a few. I mentioned already food scraps in the context of the ongoing planning study. I mentioned the durable medical equipment program, but we wrote an intergovernmental agreement with the state so that we could expand that program when the time was right, so we can include additional locations. So we're hoping in the next few years that that will be possible for us, because it's been well-received from our customers, our constituents. We collect clean concrete, brick, and block, and we've used it in our capital projects for many years, so it's actually a resource for us, but the future could include processing that material into something saleable. We know that EVs are coming, electric vehicles, including construction equipment. So as we prepare our facilities for the future, we keep that in mind so that we have the infrastructure to build charging stations and things. And actually, we added our first hybrid electric bulldozer, so that's kind of neat. I saw that, you know, some of the other jurisdictions are talking about that, and we really haven't talked about it yet, but it's, you know, that's our big, one of our big consumers of diesel fuel, so anything that can reduce that is a good thing. Solar projects remain top of mind as we renovate our facilities. And I mentioned communicating with customers, both the programs we have and how to use them. It's an area where new tools may help us reach customers, and we certainly hope you all have downloaded the Recycle Coach app and use that and look for that, look for updates through that. And then development, redevelopment, and new facilities could be part of future plans. Next slide, please. So there is also a section that talks about proposed private facilities on page 525 and 526. So my words are, we are obligated to include these in the plan. It's one of our ministerial duties. It's really not a regulatory responsibility of DPW, but you'll see in the plan, the Chesapeake Terrace Rubble Landfill. And again, we say that has zoning subject to special exception requirements, and I know that has a long history, but that's in the plan as well. The Curtis Bay Medical Waste Services is a proposed transfer facility in Glenburnie that's going through the state permitting process right now, and I guess their proposed location in Glenburnie is, has zoning. The use is permissible in that zoning district, so they're moving through the state process. And then Veteran Compost, I've been up here before to talk about them. They were added to our current plan by Bill 29-21 a few years ago, but the location has changed, and the new location has not been named, as far as I know. So we've kept them in there without a specific location, but as a proposed facility. So as they move through their processes, I won't have to come back to amend this plan. Next slide, please. In terms of the approval process, the plan has been reviewed by county agencies and departments. MDE has given us tentative approval, so they've seen a draft. It's been published online and presented through the Planning Advisory Board process, and the adoption through the legislative process is ongoing. We do have a few technical amendments to address a map update, fix a graphic, and adjust a section header, and a table of contents page number, and I want to thank the county auditors team for helping identify those. And we will also offer an amendment to modify the enacting clause. So this, this plan is adopted under state law, just like a master water and sewer plan. However, we had a different clause at the end of the bill. So we want to, and this again was the auditor's office finding, we want to make sure that both plans, since they're adopted in the same way, have the same enacting clause in the county legislation. Next slide, please. So I hope I stayed to my 15 minutes, and I hope that's a good executive summary, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. That was excellent. Do we have any, oh, Mr. Volkey has some questions.
I do. I read this plan.
Well done.
I appreciated it. I thought it was very well done. I started reading in the beginning, and I had a lot of questions, and then as I got further in the plan, I was like, well, you've answered all the questions as we get further in the plan. These are less sort of questions about the plan, more sort of just thoughts about generally how we're doing things in the county. So I remember Mr. Pruski's food waste composting thoughts, and I'm glad to see you're moving forward with that. I think it was later this year that we were supposed to get something on that, or at some point, I thought the plan had mentioned in 2023. When do we think we'll get the results of that?
I think we'll have it probably this calendar year or early next.
Okay.
We'll have our study complete.
And then that'll be shared with us, too?
We can certainly do that.
Perfect. Thank you. So I guess then sort of parlaying off of that study and into the general concept of recycling, so I noted in here, I think at certain points, you said, with the single-stream you said with the single-stream recycling, the facilities sometimes have trouble processing certain things. There's amount of things that are put in there that are waste. I thought the number, I couldn't find it, but I thought it was around 12% is something that you said that was like problematic waste. But what I've seen other jurisdictions do, and I don't know if we do this in the county. I've never seen it, but you can correct me if I'm not getting it. Could we put out those big dumpsters that have the different partitions, where you could give people the option, not the requirement, but the option to sort their own recycling so that you don't have everything having to go through single stream? And would that at any point help with the efficiencies of sending everything to a single-stream source that then has to sort it out? I'm just wondering for like, you're almost calling power recyclers, right? But people who are willing to go that extra mile, is that something we could put in? I've never seen that at the Northern Center, but I may have missed it. I know for things like bulk metal, bulk trash, you have that. But I've never seen something that's more consumer-driven that's like, hey, I'm going to roll up with a cardboard box, and I've got a bunch of different things I'm going to sort them myself. Is that something we could do? Is that something we're already doing? Would that help at all?
Yeah. So, I think, good question. We have, we've started for glass. It's actually more valuable if it's color-sorted. And we actually sold some, I think, this week or last week.
Okay.
So, we have what you're talking about, receptacles with different colored glass partitions.
Yeah.
We also have separate collection of, for drop-off, cardboard because we have a bailing operation. You really need to come out and see all these things.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we've been bailing cardboard for decades, and we sell that ourselves. So, it's like the spot market to the highest bidder sort of thing. But yeah, so if you want to be a power recycler, that's where our facilities really shine because they take all manner of things, all the time. Used oil, antifreeze, clam shells, cardboard, textiles.
I know. I'm with you.
Yeah. So, yes, I think we have those types of opportunities. And we're always trying to add more. And as, you know, programs, as one of those companies wants something, we try to meet that need.
Okay. I guess what I've seen, can I follow up?
Of course.
Thank you. So, like Ocean City, for instance, when I'm down there sometimes in the summer, I see in the parking lot of like the Walmart, you know, out in the far reaches of it, that they have this big four-partitioned dumpster that has the different coatings on it. Do we have anything like that outside of the Northern?
No, we don't have any unmanaged. The only unmanaged location that we have is at the Heritage site, where we added textile recycling at the Heritage Office complex.
Is that clothing?
It is clothing.
Okay.
Yeah, clothing, but shoes and stuffed animals and all those types of things.
Got you.
So, more than just clothing.
Okay.
But yeah, we really haven't gone to unmanned drop-off locations just because of some of the challenges. In fact, we, you know, we have, we've had single-stream dumpsters, a lot of parks and things. And you probably noticed that a lot of them are locked, not because the park doesn't use them correctly, but because they're oftentimes the victims of dumping. You know, off-hours, people throw their trash in there. Some, we've had some set on fire, things like that. So, it becomes a challenge, so.
And is that worth looking into, especially with the technology advancements? Like, we have ballot drop boxes that we leave unmanned, that are unpersoned, I should say. But they have a video camera on them. Is that something that we could do that would give us another avenue for people?
Yeah. I mean, I think we can always, we can always explore it.
Okay.
And that's the beauty of this plan. You saw it, if you read through it.
Yeah.
It's a framework.
It is.
We can, we can pretty much.
Well, we're good till 2048. But my concern is what happens after that, you know, with the landfill.
Right.
Okay. All right. I have more questions, but I see Ms. Radbien.
Thank you. I was curious about the new facility at Elk Ridge. Is that going to provide just, is the additional capacity? Or is there improved technology as well?
So, it's, I guess it's under wraps right now. But it's a private facility. But what I know about it is they're, yeah, they're planning to use more robotics and technology to do sorting. So, whether it will include additional material types, I don't know at this point. But, you know, we have a contract currently, and it's up to five years. So, we should be one of the first customers at the new facility when it opens. And hopefully, it will have some additional opportunities for us.
Awesome. That's cool. Look forward to hearing more about that.
So, the facility as it, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I just had a thought. But the facility as it exists now was built in 2007, and it was state-of-the-art. But we're a big region. We do a lot of recycling. So, Waste Management, Recycle America, which is the biggest player in the marketplace, I guess, thought we were a good investment. So, that's good. That's good news.
I visited it a few years ago, and I was really impressed. So, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're working there and, you know, getting more things into the recycling stream. And obviously, you know, the more of that we can do, the better. My next question was just about battery recycling. And, you know, as a person who's a big proponent of electric vehicles, and it sounds like you guys are on that wave, too. How does, how does the county address, you know, disposing of electric vehicle batteries and/or recycling them? I know that there's, there's at least folks working on recycling.
Right.
You know, and I guess probably beyond EVs, too, but all kinds of things that are battery-powered.
So, the short answer is we have, our recycling program for batteries right now includes basically lead-acid batteries, so automotive, marine, motorcycle batteries. You can drop them off at our facilities, and we can recycle them through our, the companies that do that recycling. For any of the lithium-ion batteries, we added that to our HHW program recently. So, you'll start to see that word pushed out because more and more things are lithium-ion. They cause problems. We've had a number of fires in collection vehicles because when they're thrown in the trash and they get smashed, or they touch other things, they heat up and cause fires. So, that's a problem. The bigger picture with the EV batteries, we actually, through our county executive, signed on to a letter as MDE, Maryland Department of Environment, is studying recycling needs in the region. EV batteries from cars is one because there's a huge cost. And I guess, I think what I remember was, was on the order of $2,000 a ton to recycle EV batteries. And the locations aren't readily available, you know, across the country. So, again, the several county executives asked MDE to study that particular issue in the framework of their, of their recycling needs assessment. So, hopefully, that will, that will, you know, bring some clarity to that in the future. But again, just thinking out loud, we're charging less than $400 a household. You know, if there's a significant number of these batteries and they come into our system at $2,000-ish dollars each to recycle, that's a problem. So, I mean, personally, I would hope to see it sort of back to the manufacturer slash consumer and the price of the vehicle and battery combination, you know, so that there's some end-of-life management. And again, just getting off topic here, but looking at the big picture, you know, I think everyone thought the holy grail would be to do battery-to-battery recycling. So, you can send a battery back, have it refurbished, and then go back to a vehicle. But I think the, what industry's finding out is that the battery technology is advancing so quickly that if you buy a vehicle now, 10 years from now, you're not going, unless you're replacing a battery in a 10-year-old vehicle, you're not going to want that same battery technology for a new vehicle. So, that's, that's a challenge as well for the industry.
Thank you. And just in general, thank you for basically, you know, taking on the responsibility of, you know, catching whatever comes your way and trying to figure out what to do with it.
Well, well.
That's a massive undertaking.
Thank you.
So, a week or so ago, I had the pleasure of coming out to the Millersville landfill and getting a tour and an overview. And for anyone who hasn't done that, it's fascinating. It's amazing, all the things they're doing, the amount of recycling and reuse that's being done from generating electricity from the methane to the compost, the, well, the mulch pile is quite impressive and all of the different things. So, it's really just a very well-run, constantly innovating facility. I was very impressed. And one thing I did, we did notice, and we all commented on, plastic bags that are, that are blown into the trees and on the things. And so, I'm looking forward to next year that there'll be fewer of those floating around at the, at the landfill. But people, you can recycle your plastic bags. But definitely, hopefully, we'll see a reduction there. And I do want to, I know you have to include it in there as part of the possibility. But I just want to be clear for the public that the Chesapeake Terrace rubble landfill, there are multiple challenges going on that, for that, for the community. So, just because it's included in the plan does not mean that that is going to be coming online anytime soon or in the future. So, thank you all very much. This is very detailed, as I echo what Mr. Volkey said. It was very, you know, and not your standard evening read, but very interesting when you got into it.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Mine was like Saturday morning at 6:00 AM, like scrolling through. I just sent you an email to come do a tour, so I'm looking forward to that.
Okay. Super.
Okay. And Ms. Hummer touched on something I was going to ask about, which is the Chesapeake Terrace landfill is certainly something that has been the subject of many, many articles. It was a big part of the last campaign. So, I know where a lot of people stand on it because they've all come out publicly and said it. To what degree is that built into the plan? I know you have it as proposed, but how does that factor?
It's not built into any of the programs that we have thought about using.
Okay.
So.
So, it's additive, but it's not something that you're relying?
Right. So, I'm considering it's sort of our ministerial duty because it has to be in there to go through the state process if they have achieved zoning. And again, maybe that's a very fine point.
Lots of ifs.
Yeah, they have zoning subject to special exceptions. And whether they can meet those, that's part of the process.
Yep. I have one more question, but it's a different topic, so.
Go ahead.
I want to ask you about plastic bag recycling because Ms. Blair Klausmeyer and I talked about this a while back, and it's always, it's been right in my mind. So, at Northern, you've got that little trash can that's over there on the left-hand side that you can put film in plastic bags into. What are you actually allowed to put in there? Because I put any manner of plastic things, Amazon bags. I'm probably getting myself in trouble here because that's what Lori told me last time. But plastic bags, Amazon bags, you know, plastic film that has the recycle sticker on it, not the really, really thin stuff, but the stuff that does look to be recyclable. What is permitted in there? I feel like.
Okay. So, so.
Yeah.
Back to that list of places these things go. Most of our plastic, film plastic goes through our partnership with Giant Food. And then, it goes to Trex. So, they're making it into a plastic lumber. So, it's a very sustainable loop. I'm going to let my recycling manager answer the very particular question about what is plastic film.
Okay. One rule of thumb we tell residences, if it's stretchy, you can stretch it. It's accepted.
Okay.
But it's got to be clean and dry. So, your salt bags, those can stretch. They got a residue of salt on there. So, unless you're going to wash those out, don't put those in there. Mulch bags, same deal. They're stretchy, but they're dirty. Unless you're going to clean them out, don't put them in there. So, any kind of stretchy film. Your Amazon bags, the ones that are plastic with bubble and plastic again, even though it's got the symbol on it, it's difficult to recycle because there's different elements coming together to make that bag. And you can't separate those elements, including adhesive and everything else. But if it goes in there, it's okay. Giant has not slapped their hand for it showing up at their facility, so. But that's, that's a rule of thumb. So, bags that aren't are like your chip bags, your snacks. Those aren't stretchy. You go to stretch it, and it rips. So, people think that's a plastic bag, but it's not plastic film, except in our program. So, that's one of the things we added when we took it out of Curbs. And just FYI, that's the only material we've ever taken out of what was accepted in single-stream recycling. There've been different things we've always taken, and you've always taken them. That's the only thing we stopped taking. And you mentioned earlier the 12% residue rate. So, it's 11.3. And what that residue is mostly made up is, is plastic bags or other things that are recycling, like clothing, like Lori mentioned, or scrap metal. So, it's everything, and most of the things that are showing up in there, we have drop-off options for them at our facility. The one thing that, even food scraps, that's another thing that'll show up in recycling is people with their food waste away in their recycling. So, that's a big no-no. But they can drop that off at our facility as well, so. But yeah, so plastic bags, that's, that's a rule of thumb. And we're going to continue to go, because it's not going away completely with the law. And I confirm with Giant that they're still going to bail them and accept them at their facility in Jessup. So, our program's not going anywhere.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Radbien.
I think you may have just answered all the questions that I was going to raise. Mr. Volkey was on the same wavelength as I was, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate this today. This was really excellent presentation. And obviously, we should all be urging our constituents to watch and look at your presentation. It is really interesting. I have some durable medical equipment. Now, I know where to take it. And I have a lot of stuffed animals I know where to take. So, I'm very excited about that. The weekend, the weekend honey-do list has been created. Do we have any other questions for this excellent panel? Thank you so much for your, for your work and your dedication to the county and our constituents. We're going to move forward with Bill Number 81-23, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations Budget Supplementer Appropriations Grants Special Revenue Fund, Opioid Abatement Special Revenue Fund. The administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Joining me at the table, I've got Hannah Dyer, our DCAO, Stephen Teroux from our Budget Office, Sandy O'Neil from Health, Grace Tidings as well, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer at the end of the table. We also have some folks from the Partnership here, if there are any specific questions on those grants. This is a supplementary appropriation bill, as you're all familiar by this point. There's a good list in the fiscal note of all the grants. I won't go through them one by one, but I do want to flag the opioid grant in there comes directly from our conversations around recovery residences and sprinklers. So you'll see 1.6 million in there for that. Happy to answer any questions. Oh, sorry, only 1 million is for the grant program.
I'm not seeing any questions of my colleagues for this bill. Thank you for your time. You at least got to hear the solid waste presentation, which was beneficial for, for everyone, I think. So next on our list this morning is Bill number 82-23, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service Disability Leave. I am the sponsor of this bill, so I will try to chair this work session and this, this bill conversation. I did work with the Office of Personnel to draft this. Let me see if I can explain this. Currently, currently accumulated disability leave, or DL, can be used for the care or treatment of an employee's non-dependent member for mental or physical illness, injury or condition, but only up to 64 hours of leave per calendar year. This means that an employee cannot use more than 64 hours of DL to care for their own biological, adoptive, foster, or stepparent. An employee may have loads of DL accumulated, but will be barred from using it, and instead will have to use annual leave or take unpaid leave to care for a parent beyond 64 hours or eight days. So this bill removes the prohibition and allows classified employees to, who accumulate disability leave, to use it for the care and treatment of a child, a biological parent, adoptive parent. There's a list of eight things. I'm happy to go through the list, but does the administration have anything to add to this? This is really just modernizing our, our leave and acknowledging elder care and, and other things that are currently falling on the shoulders of our county employees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Ann Bedowski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel, Lori Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. The administration supports this legislation. Just by way of background, 64-hour limit was originally put in place in county code in 2019 to comply with the Maryland Healthy Working Families Act. Prior to that, a section of the code limited the amount of disability leave an employee could take to care for a non-dependent parent or child to a max of five days or 40 hours, depending on their job classification. Built 70-19 in 2019, upped that to 64 hours, and expanded the definition of family member. County, however, is more than able to go beyond that 64-hour limitation.
Mr. Volkey.
Got a question. Not necessarily for you, for the panel.
Great.
So it looks like there is still a requirement that there be a disability certificate under FMLA for you to use this type of leave. Is that right? Okay. So personnel will still have to double-check and make sure, like, this is something that you have a medical practitioner who is saying this is a approved necessary leave. With this, and understanding, as Ms. Pickard put it, that people could have a lot of disability leave for themselves, but not a lot of dependent leave, what do you anticipate is the impact? Because there's no fiscal note on this, because it's not an admin bill. So do we think that we're going to see a lot more where people are able to use this leave in a more flexible way? Do we anticipate that'll have an impact on the county workforce? Do we think it'll have an impact on workflows? Like, what do we see as looking forward? I'm not asking you for a crystal ball. That question always comes up. But, but I am curious, like, you have to have modeled this in some form or fashion, because this is a pretty big change. And so now that you're taking the limitation out, I have to believe there will be some anticipated impact. What do you think that will do to the workforce?
Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer. We don't really have that figured out yet. I do think with the increasing number of those of us who are caring for our parent or, you know, or stepparent, we just don't know. But with the FMLA requirement part of it, and to be able to use your, and reduce your amount of accumulated DL, I don't necessarily see a huge problem at this point, so.
Any other questions? Ms. Radman.
Thank you. First off, I love this bill. And I also wanted to just ask, is there, is there a pattern right now of employees just taking unpaid leave to, you know, to sort of handle the situations that might come up under this bill?
I don't have that answer for you, Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer. I unfortunately have not tracked that. It's something we could look at, and we will probably want to just take a look at how this changes in the future to see if there's a significant increase, but I don't have that direct answer.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions of my colleagues. I urge support of this bill. And we'll move on to the next one. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for working with me to get, to get it right. Okay, next, we have, oh, Bill 83-23, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Housing for the Elderly of Modern Means and Workforce Housing. Again, this is my bill. Good morning, everyone. This is relatively straightforward in that we passed Bill 5419 and 9719 back in 2019. We have seen, over the years, much success with actually getting workforce and elderly housing built in the county. A consortium of nonprofit affordable housing developers approached me about, as they're looking for additional property and looking to continue building this type of housing, that the conditions were a little onerous. And so we have, in this bill, proposed shifts of more intense zoning districts like R-15, commercial and industrial, to modify road classification and gross area coverage requirements to allow greater flexibility in finding suitable sites. That's basically the rundown. Happy to discuss further. I did work with the administration on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. The administration supports this legislation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Bedowski.
Trouble with the light today. I just, I had a question about the definition of structure. This might be a better question for, for the panel. Would that include storm water management structures?
Hi, now, the, the coverage requirements in the code that are based on structures and parking are, are, does not include stormwater management.
Okay. Thank you.
So I did receive some questions from colleagues about the, the increase in lot coverage percentage, and I just want to be really clear, there are no exemptions in this bill from any sort of stormwater, or forest conservation, or open space, or anything like that. But you could have, especially in our more urban suburban areas, you could have a parcel that can go beyond the current code coverage and, and create a lovely community. So the, the 80% lot coverage is probably not something anybody can reach based on other, but giving that flexibility, so there isn't some arbitrary number, it just expands it. The 80% is actually what we use in industrial. But again, there aren't any exemptions to any other open space, all those things. It's really a flexibility tool. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Fantastic. Moving right along, we will tackle Bill 84-23, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Zoning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies. This is a administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Christina Pompah and Mark Wildonger from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill 84-23 is an update to the 2016 Odenton Town Center Master Plan. The town center falls entirely within the geographic area represented by the council member from District Four. And although planning for the Odenton Town Center started in the county in 1972, it wasn't until 1995 that the council adopted the Odenton Town Center Growth Management Area Plan. A number of updates have occurred to that plan since 1995, the most recent being in 2016. Previous versions of the master plan contained both development requirements and design standards. This update will move legal language in Articles 17 and 18 to the county code, while design standards will remain within the master plan. A list of key changes and updates to this master plan can be found on page 13 in the draft plan. Mark and Christina from OPZ are here this morning to discuss the highlights of the draft plan and code provisions, and there is a slideshow. And I will turn it over to Mark for the slideshow.
Good morning. Next slide, actually, probably next to slides. The next one, please. Yeah. So again, the purpose of this update is to, based on the 2016 master plan, there was guidance to update it every five years. So we initiated that process a couple of years ago, and that's why we've initiated this update. And the purpose, then, is to advance a refined community vision for a walkable, connected Odenton Town Center, simplify the regulatory framework. And again, what you'll notice with this update to the master plan is we're migrating some of the regulatory components to the code, while the master plan can stay this visionary document, setting the stage for implementation and reflecting recent advancements in county policy. Next slide, please. So the public process here, I know there might be many dates up there, but the idea is we kicked off this process in January of 2021, and then with the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee. And after that process, then, we, we worked with the community, had a series of outreach opportunities where the Office of Planning and Zoning was to get, was gathering input from the public, understanding what the needs were, and that was our needs assessment. And we did that during the spring of 2021. And then, that helped then develop our strategies, which you'll find in the implementation matrix of the master plan. And we reviewed those strategies with our Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee during the summer to the fall of 2021. And then we were able to publish a preliminary draft in the spring of 2022, which was available for public comment. Then during that time, we received public comment, and the Office of Planning and Zoning was able to do a deep dive on those comments, work with the Office of Law, go back to some individuals that had those comments, and really better understand what their concerns were, or where we may need to improve the master plan as well as the code revisions. And then we had our Planning Advisory Board review in May of 2023. And then again, under further advice from the Office of Law, we moved one section that we originally had in the code back to the master plan, and the PAB recommended approval on that additional chapter in August of 2023. And here we are with our draft of the master plan, as well as the code revisions. Next slide. Again, here's just that timeline is simplified, where again, we had our needs assessment, gathering background information, developing the master plan, getting public comment on that plan, reviewing those comments, and, and getting planned in better shape with recommendations from the advisory committee, as well as the Planning Advisory Board. Next track, next slide. So what we heard from the public is that there really wasn't a sense of place in Odenton. There was no sort of communal place, no popular place where people could go and gather and shop. There weren't amenities. What we've heard recently, too, is there were requirements where developers need to provide benches every 100 feet. So we have a bunch of benches, but we don't have a lot of other meaningful amenities for the public to engage and interact with. There also weren't very quality retail options with the, within the Odenton Town Center. If you go there, there, you do see vacant storefronts, and then there aren't further any quality retail options for the public to, to shop at. Bicycle pedestrian facilities are sort of hit or miss within the Odenton Town Center. Sometimes you might be along a sidewalk, and then that sidewalk ends. Or likewise with any bicycle facilities, bike lanes, or any dedicated paths for those. And we also heard that traffic congestion is a significant issue, again, within the Odenton Town Center. However, there are these opportunities. There's the transit-oriented development project, and that would be a more dense type of housing, retail, office-type of mix around the train station. Again, one opportunity that, that might be a catalyst for that is the parking garage that's being built on that site. There is the opportunity for more development and redevelopment in the Odenton Town Center based on the state's largest employer being right next door, that being Fort Meade, and their plans for growth over the next 25 years. And there is the Library Community Park, which is funded, and the Department of Recreation Parks is currently in that process of getting that built. And that could be that destination that could, again, be a catalyst for future development and interest in the Odenton Town Center. Next slide. So taking together all those challenges and opportunities, the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee developed this vision. And really, their idea was if you were to be transported back to the Odenton Town Center in 20 years, this is what people would say about the community, that there is that sense of community, and it's a community that prospers. Next slide. So the way, strategies that were included in this plan that addressed some of those concerns or challenges were to increase tree canopy, better site design, and then within the Built Environment Chapter, based on the statistics we received where population is to double by 2050, and employment's going to grow by approximately 50% in the next 25 years, that there's this focus on transit-oriented development. Again, the idea being that there, you may not necessarily need a car or want a car, but you're able to get around the community or to Baltimore and Washington DC or other employment centers by alternative modes of transportation. The opportunity to diversify housing types and affordabilities, making sure that there's provision for multifamily units, townhomes, other types of housing types for all different affordability ranges. And again, making sure that we fill in those bicycle and pedestrian gaps so that people, again, can get to where they need to go if they don't have a vehicle. Next slide. Then in our Healthy Communities Chapter, again, continuing support for park programming, ensuring that people have this recreational outlet. One thing we had heard from representatives from, from Fort Meade was their jobs are very stressful, and they need these recreational outlets within the community to go with their families, as well as other needed amenities. And then with healthy economy, a lot of things have changed over the past five years, so ensuring that these strategies respond to that changing market and making sure that these businesses thrive. Next slide. And then the last chapter is, is what we call Process and Procedures, where it's that opportunity to clarify that role of the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee, as well as what we heard from developers, is sometimes applications get bogged down. But again, this is the place where we want development to happen, so we want to create incentives and ensure that there's that streamlined review process so that there isn't a lot of cost then on their end. Next. And this is that chapter that got folded back into the master plan, and I'm going to let Ms. Pompah explain that.
Good morning, Chair Pickard.
Chair Smith.
I'm by his chair today. Mr. Chairman has arrived. I think he's going to let me stay in my seat here for convenience.
All right. Fabulous. Christina Pompah with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Thank you very much, Mark, and I will take it over from here. The Odenton Town Center is coming on the heels to county council on the parole town center, and there are some similarities and some differences. The vision that we started with for Odenton was to be able to move all of the development requirements into the county code, but as we were working with the Office of Law on parole, we found that some things were going to get, need to go back into the master plan. And basically, the things that are going back in the master plan are the urban design requirements, architectural requirements, landscaping requirements that either supersede or supplement the language in the landscaping manual, and historic preservation design requirements. Next slide. So some of the key goals of the code update were to simplify, streamline, and remove redundancy. In the 2016 master plan, there are over 100 pages of text related to the development requirements. And so our goal was really to try and streamline and simplify. We also, as we've stated, have kept most of the plan and aspirational information in the plan, and standards and requirements are moving to the county code. One of the things that's different between Odenton and parole is that Odenton actually has its own zoning districts, zoning categories that have their own requirements, whereas parole was an overlay. So this is not exactly the same as parole, and you'll see that there are additional requirements in Article 18, which is why this bill is longer than the parole bill. So just to cover where we have changes in the code for this legislation, Article Three, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, we have, with this plan update, renamed in the code everything that used to be the Odenton Town Center Growth Management Area is now simply going to be the Odenton Town Center. So there are a lot of revisions in the code that don't actually do anything to change the code requirements. It's just a name change, and there's several of those in Article Three. But the other thing that's getting added into Article Three is actual information about the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee, and it's very similar language to what was in the 2016 plan. It's simply now going to be in Article Three in our county code. The changes in Article Four Finance, Taxation, and Budget, it's really about the renaming and dropping the Growth Management Area, and that's also similar for what's happening in Article Three in Public Works and Utilities. The big changes for this legislation are in Articles 17 and 18, the Subdivision and Development Code and the Zoning Code. Next slide. Yeah, and this is just a summary of the language that's moving into Article Three about the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee. Again, it's very similar to what is already in the 2016 master plan, but it's getting codified. Next slide. Okay. How has Article 17 been changed? So just a couple of things here. We have the name change from the Odenton Growth Management Area to the Odenton Town Center. I will say that, I, I know that you all remember, we had 29 amendments to the parole town center master plan where we had similar language in this legislation. We've already made those changes. Now, they're not all applicable, but many of them are, and so those changes are already here. The adequate public facilities language has been streamlined to eliminate redundancy with the countywide adequate public facilities code language. We have updated the applicability language to be very similar to what was in the 2016 master plan, and the compliance and conflict section of the draft code contained in Section 177803 identifies that projects must comply with certain sections in the master plan. That's very similar to how it was constructed for parole. And so that language in the code ensures we don't lose the force of law with the details of the requirements that are moving back to the master plan. Next slide, please. So there are also sections in this Article 17 related to transportation, site access and circulation, trail connections and construction, green area, historic preservation, and redevelopment sites. Next slide. Similar to parole, there's an incentive program. The biggest difference between the language that's in Odenton and the language The biggest difference between the language that's in Odenton and the language that we used for parole is that the list of profers for Odenton is actually contained in the master plan. It's not in the code, but otherwise, it's very similar. Next slide. Okay, moving on to Article 18. As I said, Odenton does have its own zoning districts. In the 2016 master plan, there were six sub-areas, which were basically considered the zoning districts, and 17 regulatory blocks. For this update, we're simplifying into seven zoning districts and one overlay. That overlay is one of the 17 regulatory blocks. Now, in Odenton, we always, when we updated the plan, we would do a little bit of comprehensive zoning. However, we have found, and the Office of Law advised us, that because of the way Article 18 was rewritten during Plan 2040, that it really only contemplates comprehensive zoning through the region plans. So, there's no comprehensive zoning happening with Odenton. There are no lines changing. There are some names changing, but we do not believe that that constitutes comprehensive zoning, and there are recommendations in the plan that will inform comprehensive zoning when Region 5 comes. But I would suggest that when we update the GDP the next time, we probably want to allow for comprehensive zoning to happen with Odenton, as it always has. In Article 18, next slide, Laura. In Article 18, the use table is largely unchanged from that which we had in 2018, I'm sorry, 2016. Most bulk regulations are the same, except we have added a minimum-to-maximum setback from Maryland 32. We did add noise mitigation, consistent with what we did for parole for any projects that would be, would have certain adjacency to Maryland 32. We have tailored some of the conditions for conditional uses for Odenton Town Center to be more Town Center appropriate. And one of the things that I think many are happy about is we had some requirements that if you had a project that was over five acres, you had to do a mix of use, and there were certain ratios that had to be met of the mix of uses. We've eliminated the ratio requirement and have simply said you need to provide a mix of use, and that allows for the market to help influence. If you say on a piece of property, you have to have certain percentages. If the market doesn't support that, you may stymie redevelopment efforts, and we didn't want to do that. Next slide, Laura. So, we have specific language in the code related to parking, for structured parking and surface parking, bicycle parking, electric vehicle parking. EV parking is something that we heard again and again in testimony and from the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee. And I think that that may be our last slide. So, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much, Ms. Hammer.
So, first off, I want to thank you all. An enormous amount of work has gone into this and many, many meetings, and I'm very grateful for the whole team from OPZ and all the people over the years on the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee who've really provided very valuable input into this. And I also want to thank Ms. Rodvian and the folks at parole, because all of your things to do that helped to simplify this, that we learned from that one and included some things in already, so that's going to make this a little easier to pass. You know, I think this is a great vision of where we want to go, and we're moving forward, and I agree with you. One of the best things about this is that we have, it takes away the percentages for mixed use, so it really will allow more freedom and flexibility in redevelopment and some of the things that have been stymied, and that's a huge thing that we've heard from every sector to do that. So, I'm looking forward to seeing it all come to fruition, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, one of the questions I had about the bill is on page 20. It talks about the different uses in the use chart there in the Odenton Town Center districts, and I was looking in the code, and I think this is a new add to the code, right? I don't think this use chart's in the code currently. Is that right?
Correct. It was in the 2016 master plan.
So, I'm looking at the 2016 master plan. Where in that plan does it lay out which things can be done in which district? Specifically, my question is about rooming houses, which looks like it's a permitted use in the Odenton master plan in every one of the zoning districts. Is that something that's currently allowed under the 2016 Odenton, God bless you, in every zoning district? That's where I'm going with it, but I'm trying to piece it through with you, and I'm not finding it.
Page 48 of the 2016 master plan is the list of the permitted uses, and rooming houses is the last one under the residential category, and it is permitted in all the sub-areas, including, then again, blocks eight and nine, and it's not permitted in the historic district, block 10.
Okay. Yep, I see where you're talking about.
Which is intended to be the core historic district.
And you're retaining that or not in this bill? You are retaining that, because the OTC-H in the new bill is keeping that same removal. Okay, got it. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you very much. We're moving on to Bill 8523, an emergency ordinance concerning zoning uses and structures temporary uses. Mr. Hunt, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the table are Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law and Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, I'm sure, as you remember, during the COVID-19 pandemic, the restaurant industry was affected by capacity and other restrictions put into place by state and local governments to prevent exposure and transmission of COVID-19. On May 29th of 2020, the county executive issued Executive Order Number 22, which was later renewed through Executive Order 26, which allowed restaurants to open outdoor facilities as a temporary use without the need for a temporary use authorization under the county code. Bill 5521 passed on June 7th of 2021 and effective on June 9th of that year. Through that bill, the council extended the temporary use in the executive orders through November 1st, 2021. Thereafter, the temporary use was extended through January 3rd of 2023 by Bill Number 8321, and through January 2nd, 2024 by Bill 123 at the beginning of this year. Bill 8523 simply repeals the sunset provisions of Bill 5521, is amended by 8321 and 123, and sets that, those bills set termination dates for outdoor dining as a temporary use, and this bill simply removes that termination date. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Volkey.
This makes the temporary permanent?
Yes.
Cool.
Any other questions? All right, moving right along. We're going to move on to Bill Number 8623, Redevelopment. This is an administration bill. I'm sure you have a...
I have a few more folks joining me at the table. So, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me is Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Eric Michelson, our Environmental Policy Director, Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So, before I turn it over to Mr. Evelyn, just broadly, this bill links the objectives of the GDP by providing incentives for redevelopment and targeted growth in revitalization areas, defines redevelopment and substantial improvement in a way that's consistent with COMAR and Article 16 for linking stormwater management requirements, streamlines the development review process, and helps to expedite approvals, and recognizes that redevelopment projects often have constraints that increase the need for modifications, and helps to streamline the development review process. It also recognizes that redevelopment projects often have other constraints as well, and provides an incentive for redevelopment while limiting capacity impacts. Also provides some financial incentives for redevelopments and provides more flexibility in uses for redevelopment and addresses some current housing needs. And with that, I will turn it over to Jansen Evelyn.
Good morning, Vice Chair. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, county council members. Jansen Evelyn with the administration. As Mr. Hunt already noted, many of the high points of this bill, but we wanted to be very clear, and I know we've had the opportunity to have discussions in the past, several months ago, around this legislation. The objective of this legislation is ultimately to facilitate, incentivize redevelopment by providing flexibility and streamline of the development review process. This is, it's important to note that this is in support or in accordance with the county executive's priorities of, one, community development and transit or into development. We didn't come with a slideshow today because everyone else had one. We'll save that for the public hearing. This legislation, I know we're going to have many questions coming from this last part, but this legislation is aligned with Plan 2040 by, again, by providing incentives for redevelopment in targeted growth and revitalization areas. And while countywide, this legislation, as we submitted it, is limited to development projects specifically in the following GDP policy areas, critical economic, critical corridor, town center, village center overlay, and TOD overlay. I also, because I know that many of you have already had a chance to discuss with me this bill, I want to let other members of my team, if they want to add additional points with respects to, I don't want to wane on the environmental impacts, but I know Eric may want to touch on why this bill is important from even an environmental policy perspective.
Eric Michelson, Environmental Policy Officer. So, just to speak to that point, you know, when I spoke with the county executive initially about this role in the CAO, this actually was a top priority for me and for him in terms of environmental focus, and maybe that seemed a little bit incongruous, but, you know, the county executive in his previous term and the council did a tremendous amount of work to tighten the Forest Conservation Act rules, to really make greenfield development much more rigorous in terms of the environmental constraints. And so, there is absolutely a need to allow for that development pressure to find a location to occur, and these development, are these developed corridors that Jansen has referred to seem to be the appropriate place to do that. This bill gives flexibility in those corridors and responds to a lot of the market concerns and the issues, actually, that Ms. Pompa raised in the previous bill in terms of flexibility, and I think it'll be, go a long way towards addressing some of the affordable housing issues in the county and taking some of the pressure off greenfield development in other parts of the county where that's become more restrictive. So, thanks.
Yeah, I also wanted to also add before I turn it over to the council for questions and comments, I also wanted to add that this is legislation, or this initiative was something before I was in this role. This was something that the administration, along with many various stakeholders in the community, had been engaged in an ongoing dialogue and conversation on, to figure out a good way to incentivize, facilitate redevelopment from both a GDP as well as an environmental policy perspective, as well as also to balance. And so, striking that balance and going back and forth over the past, I would say, seven months, it's been, it's been an interesting song and dance, and I look forward now that this, we decided to put forth a bill that we knew was strong, that really opened up the county for redevelopment, and I welcome any questions and comments from the council.
Thank you very much. I don't see any lights except for mine, so I'll just get started with my questions.
We knew your light would be on, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
We knew your light would be on, ma'am.
Actually, Mr. Volkey, did you have a question?
You can go ahead.
Okay. I wanted, I did want to bring to the attention of my colleagues and the panel the development policy area definitions and the map, which I've had pulled up for everybody's convenience. I'm super excited about this redevelopment bill. It's much needed in our county. I am concerned about the very slim, if you look at the map, the critical economic, the critical corridor, those are just little slivers of purple, shades of purple. So, then we have lots of beige and green that where this bill will not be, the provisions of this bill will not be applicable. I'm most concerned with neighborhood preservation, because in Plan 2040, it is one of the policy, development policy areas where we said we would have specific areas targeted for revitalization. And while maybe not every single bit of that beige area is appropriate for the incentives in this bill, I do, I would like to try to work with the administration where, to where we could expand the applicability over the next legislative days of this bill. That's my biggest concern. I don't know if you all want to respond to that. I have many others on my list of questions.
Whatever you want to do.
Well, I didn't know if they wanted to open up a dialogue here. That's what this is about.
No, as we want, yes, this is a dialogue, and as, and you are one of the many council members that we've spoken extensively around this bill. I am well aware with respects to the neighborhood preservation and in terms of how that is noted in the general development plan in Plan 2040. However, as we, as the administration wrestled with, how do we, like, thread the needle in ensuring that we have the right, incentivize the right amount of redevelopment in the right targeted growth areas, we realized that neighborhood pres, there's no dispute. It's right up there. It is one of the targeted policy areas within the adopted general development plan. But because there is currently the region plan process that's going on, we wanted to let that process play out so that specifically when, if density wanted to be, if there was going to be any upzoning or increased density in those specific areas, they could be addressed. We felt that was a better way to address those, that point, drawing region planning as well as any additional subsequent compresoning.
I will, I will yield my time, since I have control of the microphones today. Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
How much time do we have? I need to keep track of that.
We have all the time in the world, council member.
Listen, this is our work session, so we can keep them at the table as long as we need to, so go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. Bottom of page five, top of page six, talks about school APF, specifically talks about passing the test for school APF if the redevelopment, can't get my words this morning, consists of multifamily with at least 50% of the dwelling units being efficiencies or one bedrooms, and none being more than two. Now, we've talked about this a lot with school APF and with the new school APF bill that we did, and I know that the school system, for purposes of counting student yield, generally looks at efficiencies and one bedrooms as a zero, and that's a nothing in terms of a contributor. The question I guess I have is, so if 50%, I'm not going to get into, like, decimal points, but if 51% of the units are efficiencies and one bedrooms, and 49% are all two bedrooms, what do we anticipate is the student yield out of that? And then, what if anything do we think would be the impact in terms of, you know, adding that to the schools? I know we have 20%, well, maybe 17% vacancy, something like that, in terms of spots across the system, somewhere in that ballpark. I guess my question really just is, like, what do we see as being the impact of this particular provision? Because we are, this is a significant, I would say, give in terms of incentivizing this type of development or redevelopment, in that there is really no student yield, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, as long as you have at least 51% of the units being ones or efficiencies. So, am I reading that correctly? Do you all see that? Do you have any projections on that? What are your thoughts on that particular piece?
Yes, yes, we definitely like it. But again, when we're looking at, as we've talked about in the current legislation that we have before this body with respects to MPDUs, when we're looking at, there is a legitimate housing crisis that, and around the county and the state is facing, and when... And when we're looking at, at weighing different policy choices, one of the ones that we looked at, again, we addressed school APF with the adjacency. We also know that with 16,000 vacant seats and the pending countywide redistricting, the levels of impact with respects to this redevelopment legislation, I don't want to say it would be nil. If there's a, I can follow up with, if you need additional data, but in terms of, we were comfortable, the administration was very comfortable with this legislation, knowing that when you look at the adjacency component, when you look at the pending redistricting, we would have the capacity to build this, build this housing. And, and when you add, when you're looking at a lot of one, and the reality is one bedrooms or these efficiencies, the, the, the impact would be the minimus to the school system. But in terms of being able to off the cuff answer that question, we would have to follow up. I don't know, Lynn, if there was anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'll just add quickly that this, this allowance mirrors what we use in the parole town center and also in the Glen Burnie overlay. So when we were discussing this in relation to those pieces of legislation, we did talk at length with the county public schools about this idea, and they, they were not concerned. They did not think that it would have a significant impact on school capacities.
I was going to do my follow up, was nobody from the schools is here, so what do they think? But you're representing that basically they are comfortable, they think this will not create an influx of problems for them, basically.
To, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll, I'll be happy to add to that, as I worked extensively on the Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay, and we have the same provision in the, in the very tight area of the town center. In the last three years, we've seen three projects come through that overlay. None of them have been residential. But we also know that in the parole town center, there's a very de minimis student yield. There's about six students or something we've seen come from, from the parole town center provisions. We, we've acknowledged the student yields. We have extensive reporting on what two-bedroom apartments yield for students, especially in these corridors of the county. So this doesn't concern me. I do have obviously other concerns about the bill, but this is not one of them. Did you have any more questions?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. Page six, so at the bottom of page six of the bill where it talks about multifamily dwellings and the requirements. So in subsection two, Roman numeral two, for redevelopment in the code in these different areas, no commercial use is required in a commercial district. So if I'm reading that correctly, it sounds like we are effectively saying you can do an entirely residential development in a commercial district if it's a multifamily dwelling that meets these criteria, and we are not worried at all about any component of commercial with it. So it could be 100% residential. We spend an awful lot of time on Plan 2040, on these different land use designations, on what you can and can't do in these different zoning districts. And now all of a sudden, we're sort of saying, well, commercial doesn't even mean commercial. Now, I know there's other instances of this in the code where we've allowed things in different districts, but to my understanding, doing that is sort of an exception, right? The underlying area is still considered to be a commercial area, and we're saying, but you can do this on top of that, or you can have some flexibility. This seems to entirely eradicate that requirement of commercial. Am I reading that right?
I don't know if I would use the language eradicate, but in terms of, when we were looking at this legislation, we realized, again, if you're trying to incentivize the suitability of housing in places other than greenfield development, we had to start making hard decisions. One decision is when you, in reality, and many in the development community would, would attest to this, it is impossible currently to, to meet this 50% residential, 50% commercial. Like, the, the numbers don't work. Whether it was the pandemic that exacerbated this, or it was just the, the result of the change in times, the way many consumers consume has changed dramatically. And as a result, we've actually found that having this 50% requirement, it's actually been a, a, a roadblock or obstacle or a challenge when it comes to building more multifamily housing. Now, I know in some parts of the state especially, but let's just use Prince George's Montgomery County, where you have these Womata metro stations, I think those are able to somehow work a little better, or not a little better, drastically better. It doesn't work here. And so with this, and for the purposes specifically of redevelopment, if you're redeveloping, we're not going to, we're not going to ask that, that builder and developer to say, hey, take on this space that already is not being fully utilized. We know that it meets many of our policy goals from both an environmental, housing, growth perspective, but yet now we want you to try to make the numbers meet by meeting this arbitrary standard of 50% commercial. So that's why we looked at, now, keep in mind, those areas are not going to not all of a sudden be commercial. And we, they're still going to be C1, C2, C3. And you actually, just as a point of clarification, there will be a forthcoming amendment. Legislation was, I, we caught it as we were waiting for the bill to be called, but it's supposed to also include, or the way it reads, it also includes C4. So, and we will make sure that the, a company use chart is updated to reflect that. But we know that those spaces, many of them are joined, or, or they're close to residential. And, and so we don't view that the, the nature of those commercial districts will be modified dramatically. In fact, many of them already built out in the sense that you still have commercial in space. And so ultimately, the market will decide whether, when you build a, when you, when you do a redevelopment, do we include the commercial because it's needed, or because of the adjoining commercial that's already in place, the market already will, will, or that need is already met. So yes, we wanted to include that flexibility to ensure that we incentivize as much as possible. But, good question.
Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. Because I know this is a question my constituents would want me to ask.
Yes.
What impact do you foresee in terms of, you know, removing that commercial requirement? Not saying that there wouldn't be commercial there at, you know?
Yeah.
But what impact do you see, if you see a strong shift towards residential and away from commercial, you know, sort of that balance shifting towards residential? What impact do you see on traffic? I know that that's very high in my constituents' minds.
No, I know that, I, I've heard from some of your constituents, specifically in the, in the parole town center, one of, as they, as they look forward to the fact that there's more flexibility as that, that this master plan is in place, they're, they're concerned. And it's a concern that many people in the county wrestle with, the need for more, the more housing, more amenities, but yet the accompanying traffic. And ultimately, I don't want to say it's reality, but it's one of the realities that everyone has to, to, to absorb, in the sense that we will need more, as we get more housing, as we, as some of these areas that were historically suburban become a bit more urban, there will be, there will be increased vehicular traffic. However, there's a, there's usually a, a correspondent increase in multimodal modes of transportation, which usually in the long run offset that increase. But I also want to point out, when you look at a residential, at a residential development that, let's just say it's 100% residential versus a strip mall with an anchor store and a whole bunch of other commercial uses, I would suggest that the traffic is actually, it's, it's more in those strip malls and those commercial centers because you have traffic going in and out all throughout the day, whereas in, in a place that's 100% residential, you may have a joint rush hour, you have those peak times. But, and if you're looking for the data, I don't want to throw more work on OPZ, but I'm sure we, they've done, and we've looked at those metrics in the past, there's more traffic in the commercial space than just purely residential. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and actually, you anticipated that my next one about transit is how, you know, how do we see, how do we foresee transit coming with the, you know, increased density that we're going to need because of the housing needs? So you anticipated that. I would actually, I, I, I don't want to throw more work on anyone, but I also think it's, you know, would be very valuable in communicating with our constituents with respect to what we already know in terms of the balance of traffic, commercial versus residential. So if there's, you know, if we have any data, you know, looking backwards to make that comparison, that would be very valuable.
And, and that's a good point. I mean, I, and this is me, Jansen Evelyn speaking, I think when you, when you're balancing the need for more, in this case, more housing or more development, you have to always be cognizant of the fact that there's going to be the correspondent impact in traffic or increased congestion, which in many ways has a negative impact on, on a resident's or constituent's quality of life. However, I think that's why when everyone loves to talk about, about transit, about how do we find ways to do multimodal, I think in many cases, historically, the practice has been, you know, you address one with, and then you address the other secondly. I think what's important is that, you know, this administration is also looking at, not just from a regional perspective, but from a countywide perspective, as, as we grow, as we evolve, because we're going to keep growing and we're going to keep evolving. But as we grow and as we evolve, how do we ensure that we, we, we include, whether it's smart, I don't know the technical term, but like the smart traffic control signals that help regulate and make sure that traffic runs in a more smoother, efficient manner? And how do we find ways as, to, to boost walkability? That's a, that's a key part of this. And so we're not just looking at, wow, we need more housing, and then we ignore the, the, the needs for, for looking at transit in a, in a holistic way. It's a both fan, but it's, but we couldn't wait to put out a redevelopment legislation until, because again, it's, I always tell people, it's a chicken or the egg question. And I apologize for speaking too informally to, to the council, to the esteemed body, but the reality, it is a chicken or egg question, which comes first. And I would suggest that you, you get the density, you get the housing, and then you adjust the traffic patterns, whether it's in a localized or regional manner, based on, on, on the impacts.
I just want to say, I literally had the words chicken and egg in my head right before you said them. So I, I think I'm, I'm very much on the same page. I mean, I, I definitely, you know, understand the concerns about traffic, but when I think about, am I going to have to sit through a red light a couple more times versus folks, you know, getting housing that's desperately needed, the, the balance is clear, in my opinion. That said, I don't also, you know, I want to make sure that that is, you know, included as part of the conversation, and it sounds like, you know, you're on it.
Yes, it's a very critical part of the conversation. Thank you for the questions.
Ms. Lebeder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, for, it's going to be a pretty simple question, for the sake that I don't
I don't think any question that comes from an elected
This will be a simple one. I just want to make sure that I understand it 100% clear. I don't want to make an assumption, thinking that I do. When looking at the map and reading the clause where it mentions that this applies to transit-oriented overlay policy area. So where there's the transit-oriented policy overlay, even if that overlay is in an area that is not one of the other ones. So for example, if you have a transit overlay in a neighborhood preservation area, that area within the transit overlay would have, would have, be applicable to this bill?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Page six again. So dwelling multifamily, this is line 26 through 28. You all have put in the densities that are there. I'm assuming, this is, is this what already exists in the code, is 12 for C1, 22 in C2, and 15 for C3? Am I understanding that? Okay.
Yes, that's what currently exists.
Yep, and so I guess my question to you is, since we're doing all of this and we're looking at, does that make sense? Does the administration still agree that those densities are the right densities in those zoning districts? And if so, why?
Actually, if you look down to the, the new language that we've included, it says for redevelopment on the title, on Title VII or Article 17, and I'm just going to skip, it says net density may not exceed 22 units per acre in a commercial district. So what we've done for the purposes of this redevelopment legislation is if it is in fact redevelopment, C1, C2, C3, C4, 22.
So, again, I'm trying to understand the impact of this legislation.
Okay.
And that was very helpful, so thank you. So what this means is that if this bill passes, C1, C2, C3, C4, to the extent that this, that a developer comes in and says there is existing property that I'm going to redevelop that is zoned some commercial designation, and I am putting a multifamily dwelling there, that now effectively means you don't have to do any residential, and you have the equivalent of R22 zoning on any of those commercial districts.
Well, you are doing residential.
You are, sorry, you don't do any commercial, it's all residential.
Yeah. I'm sorry, say that last part again.
Yeah, so you're correct. Yeah, you're saying there's no commercial.
Yes.
So C1, C2, C3, C4 don't require any commercial.
In one of these language categories.
In one, yeah, I understand. Wow. That's a big bill.
I, so to be respectfully, sir, all of the legislation that we've put out over the course of this past year with respects to school APF, the MPDU, and, and now this, these are, this is a, a suite of, this is large legislation. And the reason why is because if we're going to, one, tackle and address the housing crisis, if we're going to be serious about how do we make this place more accessible for the, the people we call, you know, heroes, we called heroes during the pandemic, we have to think creatively. And, and this is not, this is not something that we take lightly, which is why with respects to the vice chair's point, yes, neighborhood pres is within the, the GDP. But because we saw how big of a bill this is, and we saw like how, how the impact in terms of housing, how certain areas that used to have a lot more commercial, they may be utilized to, to, to be primarily residential, we tried to find the right balance. But yes, this is large a bill because these, the moment calls for, for, for the administration, for this council to, to be, to be bold.
Thank you. I do want to
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh.
She, she wanted to add on.
I, yeah, I just wanted to point something else out because I know a couple of you have raised this question about allowing the commercial districts to develop with entirely multifamily uses and a higher density. So again, as Mr. Jansen said, we're, we've written the bill, said that this allowance is specifically for redevelopment projects because we are trying to incentivize redevelopment over greenfield development. But also, there has been a trend in that direction over the last several years with our code, so that we now have several different allowances in the code that do allow commercial properties to be redeveloped completely with multifamily residential uses. We have commercial revitalization overlay districts, we have an overlay called the BWI overlay, we have BRAC mixed use, we have a Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay. And these have all happened over a period of years, but this, this, to us, seems to be where the trend has been heading. So there are, given all of those other allowances in the code, there are already a number of proper, commercial properties that are in these policy areas that this bill is applicable to, that could, that could redevelop with multifamily now anyway. So that's already in the code. So this is expanding that, the number of properties that have that capability now, but it's expanding them within certain policy areas that we think is best linked to Plan 2040. So I think just keeping that in mind, you realize it's not quite as, it's still a big bill, but it, it's not quite as, you know, drastic as it may seem because those allowances are in place in a lot of areas, and they've, they have been, several of them have been added over recent years.
Do you have another question?
It's more of a comment.
Go ahead.
I certainly appreciate that perspective, and I think that is a fair perspective. The only caveat that I would add to everything you said is each one of those has been a targeted decision in a targeted decision in a targeted area to say, we're going to do this in this area. This is the first sort of countywide, this is a map that you can pull down anywhere you are in the county, or this is a process you can pull down and use, which has not been something that's been for those other uses that you're talking about, or there's other pieces of legislation. So I think that's the one caveat to it, that for me, gives me some pause.
I appreciate that perspective. It's funny that I'm sort of sitting on the other side of it, and I'm looking at the bill and its impact in these, just these little purple slivers up and down main road arteries that we've already designated as critical economic corridor, critical corridor for, for targeted redevelopment. You know, this is where you're going to see the remnants of a commercial sprawl that is no longer performing and is just creating large swaths of impervious surface and, you know, really needing to, to move Anarundel County and some of these commercial areas into the, I don't know, the next millennium here, and, and really respond to the market and the needs and the desires of like a live, work, play. You know, we, we can continue to zone for sprawl and, you know, the one acre million dollar home, but really, we know the, the generations that are coming behind us are looking for something different in, in the way they live. So I pulled up this map for a reason, because I see very small slivers of where this bill is actually applicable, and other large green and beige areas that will be, remain untouched. So as much as I think this bill is necessary, I don't think it is probably going to have the scary impact you might be concerned about. I did want to ask a question regarding the bill itself. As I worked on the Glen Burnie Sustainable Overlay, there's a process that we developed. I wanted to ask one, two questions. One, how do they, how do they play together? If you're in the Glen Burnie Sustainable Overlay, we are also in this mapped area. So how do they play together? And then what did you take from the process we created, which was helpful with some, you know, alleviating some burden, some time constraints? And how, how do the, how do the, how do the two play together? And what did we learn from the overlay? And what did we bring forward into this bill for all the people watching at home?
Yes, because everyone's watching a work session at 10:00 a.m. on a workday.
It'll be archived forever, so.
But, but no, seriously, to answer your question, we took a lot of inspiration from that piece of legislation. We looked at it, we, at first, when we were coming out with our initial drafts with the redevelopment bill, we tried in many ways to mirror it. But first, to answer your first question in terms of, if you're there, I believe, I don't, I can't find it right now, the exact page and line, but it says in the legislation, you can elect, you can elect to either go through the Glen Burnie Sustainability Overlay, or you can go through the, this redevelopment process. To answer your second question, some of the things that we were, we were looking at and we deviated slightly from was the, the notice concept. And I know that that's something that you had pointed out, others had pointed out. We initially were just going to copy it or emulate it in terms of the way community notice was given. But ultimately, when we had extensive conversations with OPZ staff, they wanted to, they said, let's find a ways to improve that process, because they felt that there were some areas that didn't work as well in that process. So I'll kick it over to, not to put her in the spot, but I'll kick it over to Lynn to, to kind of highlight and amplify like those specific reasons that we deviated.
Actually, what I think I'd like to do, because I don't have it in front of me right now, is I can send you a chart that our development staff put together that kind of compares our normal review process with what's in the Glen Burnie overlay with what's in this bill. And there's actually a couple of aspects about the Glen Burnie overlay process that probably aren't working as well as we thought they might have initially. Having said that, as Ms. Picker pointed out, I think we've only had, I think, three projects coming through that overlay, so we don't have a huge portfolio to look at. But it, it relates to the way our due dates within our processes are tracked within our online system. And that sounds like a little thing, but it's actually complicated trying to do it the way that it's laid out in the Glen Burnie overlay. So that's, there's a couple of aspects of that process that I think our development staff didn't want to mirror in this bill. But before I try to explain it too technically and probably confuse everybody, I think I'd rather go back and get that chart, and then maybe I can send you all an email and sort of summarize what the differences are and why we didn't want to mimic that process exactly.
That would be extremely helpful. I know, to me, I, I think one of the biggest things with redevelopment is, it's more evident now, time is money, and money is expensive. Redevelopment is not simple. There's lots of steps that go into redevelopment that you don't have with greenfield. So any way where we can simplify the process, bring more predictability into the process, and make time a little shorter, as, as we go through review of redevelopment, I don't, I don't want to bring everybody back to the GDP conversations, but I think one of my suggestions was having a, a specific review team regarding redevelopment, because it is more, it is different than greenfield. I don't think anybody took that up. But now that we have a redevelopment bill before us, I think it's really, really important, if we actually want this bill to be impactful for folks who are looking to invest in our county, they have to have a predictability. And we can't take three years to get through the entitlement and development review process. It just isn't going to work, and you will not see this process be impactful. So however, the Office of Planning and Zoning wants to look at the review process, that should be top of mind in all of our procedures, as far as I'm concerned.
May I, may I quickly respond?
Of course.
Yes. So to be, to be clear, while there were aspects of the development review process that, that deviated or differed from the Glen Burnie Sustainability Overlay, I want to be very clear that this process is extremely streamlined. What we've done is we only have one application phase required. And, and that's, that's big in terms of no sketch plan, no preliminary plan, submittal. And following that, following that, that one initial plan, you can do a pre-application meeting with OPZ, IMP, and, and then following the community, following the community meeting, you can go straight to, to SDP or final. So what that is, what we've done with this process is, we listened, and we wanted to make sure that the process was streamlined, as efficient, and as cut and dry as possible to get these projects, because ultimately, yes, they're taking on certain financial risk in terms of taking on existing impervious, existing buildings, the demolition, removal, those are costs that will continue to increase. And so with this development review, the development review process coupled with the mods, I think we've come, that we've, we've, the administration has come up with a very, I think, well-thought-out, efficient way to review and get these applications processed as quickly as possible.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you. Going back to Mr. Volkey's question about the, the increase in the density, I think it would be helpful if you could explain, in a tip, in a typical situation outside of this bill, where it has been determined in county code that we're allowing 12 units per C1 or 15 units per C3 compared to the 22 units in C2, under typical circumstances in the code. Can you explain the thought process? Why is C1 usually almost half the density compared to C2? Why is C3 typically at 15? Just a little understanding, I think, why that is the typical course of action, I think can help us understand the jump to allowing the 22.
Well, first of all, these allowances for multifamily and commercial districts have been in the code for, for a number of years. So I, you know, I might have to dig back into research to get the whole story behind them. But in general, because C1, the intent has always been for it to be a smaller scale, more local scale type of commercial district. So it's not where you find big box retail, it's where you find local neighborhood services in general. So I think that was sort of logically the thought process behind a lower density. C2, because it's primarily office, so you think of employment uses, and the, you know, the sync between having residential uses together with employment uses, I think, was probably a driver for having the higher density there. And then C3 is sort of in between the two, it's more retail, still employment districts, but not always as high as the C2 districts. I also think that to date in C1, I don't think we've had a lot of C1 properties developed with multifamily uses. I think they're still primarily used for commercial uses to date. That could change in the future.
Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I'm going to continue with my questions. One of the things I wanted to clarify and just understand is, what is considered a site? I know to be considered eligible for, for this, it has to be, a site has to be 40% I, I believe in our discussions leading up to this bill, we were talking about making sure the site was actually the, the developable envelope. Once a parcel has been developed and it, it's left out its floodplains and its forest con and other sort of steep slopes, the site, in my mind, should just be the currently developed area, leaving out all those natural features. So 40% impervious. I was hoping that that's what this bill, where we got to in this draft.
It, it is. I know that our language specifically says, and I'm trying to find the exact line and then read it.
I believe it's there, it's just a little wonky to read. I just want to make sure it's there.
Part three, total area of the site.
What page?
Page two.
Okay.
I, I think.
Oh, right, oh, I'm sorry.
I think your question's addressed, by the way that we've defined total area of the site in part three, at the bottom of page two.
Yeah. And it reads, it means the area of the site less any areas subject to preservation or conservation easement, and less the area of natural features and their associated buffers. That was something when it was addition, addition, when it was previously noted, it was something that the administration agreed with, and we tried to come up with language that, that made it clear.
Thank you. I wanted to ask if there was a reason that when we're talking about the, the reduction in commercial, the percentages, but we were adding multifamily, is there a reason we're only allowing multifamily and not a mix of dwelling types? I think in some of these commercial corridors, that there could be sites that are appropriate for a mix and a, a transition on a site from multifamily to a townhome to something else as it, it blends into the community.
No, I know that was something that was previously discussed. But when we were looking at C1, C2, C3, and C4, the administration believed that multifamily, based on the fact that that had already been allowed, granted with the commercial requirement at 50%, but because we, because that sort of multifamily was already allowed and not necessarily townhomes, we decided to go with our proposed legislation to just include, to just include the multifamily. No.
Okay. That's, okay. Would, would the administration entertain any type of amendment that allowed for a mix? It seems if we're, if we're allowing the most intensive residential, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it would be harmful.
You said, you said would be willing to have, continue to have a conversation and dialogue around potentially less intensive. We, we would be amenable to having that conversation.
Okay, great. So I'll continue on this, this end. I just, you know, I know folks have, have, have seen the, the R22, and maybe that's.
Scary.
Maybe that's a little, goodness, go right to the jugular there, Mr. Jansen. Evelyn, but you know, we've, we've sort of downzoned the county over the last 40 years. We've gotten rid of R44, except for in town centers. If you look around the state and other jurisdictions, even places like Gaithersburg have, have a higher density. R22 is really not, shouldn't be all that concerning to anyone. It's still very limiting when we think about density. But I realize it's the top number in our code, but if we were to grab other codes from around local jurisdictions, it really isn't. That was just a point. I have, I think it would be helpful if there was some sort of matrix to understand all of this, for everybody to lay it out. Probably a, a presentation would have been helpful today. If, if the administration plans to bring in a, a presentation for the public at the public hearing, it would be helpful to have, if we could have that in advance.
Absolutely.
Which would help, I, I, do my colleagues concur?
And the plan was to have a presentation for the, the public hearing. And, but we'll make sure that you have it at least 48 hours in advance, so that you can review.
So we can draft amendments based on that? Okay. Do we, those were some of my main questions. I'll, guess I'll go, I'm, this, this work session is getting long. Does anyone else have any questions about this bill at this time? We look forward to all the information you've promised to send our way. The sooner the better. This bill is up for public hearing on December 4th, my son's birthday. So moving right along, we're going to tackle Resolution 48-23 and Resolution 49-23. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, no, 49-23 is Mr. Smith's. 48-23, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table is Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Don't see Marnie Wilson from Central Services here yet. Oh, there she is. Coming up, okay. So Resolution, Resolution 48-23 is approving the determination of a surplus property on Magathie Bridge Road adjacent to the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Department in Severna Park. Approximately 0.8 acres of land. County originally acquired this by deed in 1981. The initial request for this property was from the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Company. They're interested in obtaining the adjacent portion of, on Magathie Bridge Road for right of way for additional parking. The council has been provided a map of the surrounding area as part of the legislative package. If the council approves this, real estate will move forward with disposing of the property in accordance with the county code, as it is currently written. And we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I'm familiar exactly in my mind where this is, I'm looking at the map. Is this the piece of property that has the big drainage ditch, and there's the hill that goes up to the existing parking lot that Early Heights has? And I know I'm testing you, and I'm sorry.
It's actually the strip of land they're looking for, they've already have the parking lot there. So it's that portion of parking that's right on the side of Magathie Bridge. So they don't want the portion of the hill, it's strictly that flat area that's abutting up against their building.
So it's the part right at 2 coming on Magathie Bridge where there's those little spots that are diagonal that they already have parking?
Yes, they already have the parking. Yes, they already have the parking going down the side of the building, down Magathie Bridge.
So they're trespassing on county property?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay, now I understand where it is. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I'll, we'll end today with Resolution 49-23, which is Mr. Smith and Ms. Radvian's resolution.
Yeah, I was bringing it up just to add some notes, but essentially this resolution stemmed from working with a few telecommunications company, primarily Comcast, for example, who has, certainly since COVID, has allowed, have worked with the federal government on a number of different programs that allow folks who live in Anarundel County, who are on the lower end of the financial spectrum, to ensure that they had the ability, and this is connectability, when it comes to internet access. And we, we realized that when the COVID hit and the federal government shut down a lot of school systems, kids primarily were impacted by that because some of those homes were not suitable or didn't have the, the adequate technology capability to actually attend school. And so one of the companies, specifically Comcast, had reached out as well and spoke about, you know, us supporting an initiative or effort at the federal government level to ensure they continue to fund that program that's, that's being funded at, at least at this moment, whether or not it stays that way in the future might be different. But this was essentially adding our voice to the, the sort of convoy of folks who would like to see technology still accessible for some of these lower income communities where the federal government was funding it and continues to fund it. So that's where this originated from. I thought it was a good idea because I know a lot of areas that, that don't have internet access, whether that's in South County or, or North County when it comes to individuals specifically. But this was a resolution to say, yes, we agree, we want the federal government to continue that program so that we have equitable, equitable distribution of IT, specifically internet, that is able to assist these families and communities stay in communication with the world. Primarily for me, it was about schools. So that's where this stemmed from. Ms. Chair?
I joined because I thought it was a great idea and a great resolution. I want to add in my, I wanted to add my voice.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. What's the price tag on this for the federal government to keep doing this?
So.
Because that's what this is calling on, right? The federal government to keep funding this?
Yes, so they, well, that price tag is subject to appropriation from Congress. So it fluctuate, whatever they're willing to give, I'm sure the, you know, internet companies would, you know, make use of it. So I don't think there is a specific dollar amount that we can, that they're asking for at this moment. The whole purpose is to continue the program.
But we don't know what it'll cost. I mean, I.
I'd have to, well, I can get with, I can get with.
Do you know what they've been giving?
Yeah, I'll get that information from, and have that for Monday, whenever we talk about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me I have Jack Martin, our Chief Information Officer. The administration supports this resolution and I wanted to turn it over to Jack just to talk a little bit about what we are doing because Anarundel County really is leading the way in ensuring equitable access. So with that, hand it over.
Good morning. Morning, Council Chair, Vice Chair, Council members. Thank you for providing an opportunity for us to voice our support for this resolution as well as briefly highlight the county's activities related to the Affordable Connectivity Program. Last summer, we put together a digital equity work group to focus resources and put on the three primary elements of digital equity, including affordable broadband connectivity, computing devices, and support. The work group includes members of the administration, ACPS, Partnership for Children, Youth and Families, Department of Social Services, housing, the county libraries, and other county departments. Last month, the work group hosted a trainer from the FCC to learn about the process for connecting our residents to the ACP subsidy. In Maryland, residents who receive the federal ACP subsidy are automatically eligible for an additional subsidy from the state. We have submitted a grant application to the state for 7,000 Chromebooks for distribution to eligible low-income residents in need of computer devices. If successful, the library system has graciously offered to lead the distribution of the devices through their library branches as well as provide some basic support on the usage of devices. The library is also working to be able to educate patrons on the Affordable Connectivity Program and support their application process. Additionally, if the grant is successful, we are planning to have a few one-day programs around the county to support distribution of the devices and applications for the Affordable Connectivity Program. We're also collaborating with the school system to look at how our current ARPA Home Connectivity Grant will bring needed broadband connectivity to some of their student population in South County.
We're happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you very much for being here this morning. Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you. Have, we've, we've received grants in the past as the county from the federal government for these types of programs or?
For, we have, I, I would put them in a couple of different categories. So the Affordable Connectivity is new. There was one that Council Chair Smith was referring to during COVID that was supported mainly by Comcast. And we did help implement that and bring that low-cost connectivity to county citizens. But then there's also, the other type of grant I was talking about is connectivity for people in rural areas who don't have broadband in front of their homes. So we do have a current, a grant currently that includes connecting about, about 100 homes in the South County area.
About how much was that grant for?
I can get you that number. I don't have with me.
Fantastic, thank you.
Happy to do so. Those should be complete by spring. Those will be complete by spring. We've connected three major streets in South County in the past month.
Oh, that's fantastic. I'd like at this, if I can, add my name as a sponsor to this resolution. I know I do everything via the internet now. You can't even schedule an appointment. You have to go online to do just about everything just to get through your day. So this is really important, public, you know, it's infrastructure really that we need to make sure that we're, leave no one behind, right? Is there any other business to be brought before the county council? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Ms. Hummer.
I'd like to be added to, and I would say, so I was serving on the school board during COVID when this really came to a head and we discovered how many of our children and our families didn't have any connectivity. And the collaboration between the county and the school system and all the providers was really inspiring. Everybody worked and worked really hard to identify. Some, some people were easy to get connected and then we know, especially down in South County, we had some really challenging spots that we had to get to. And those children and families in general really suffered. I think today that connectivity is, is essential as electricity and water and heat and all of those things. And so we have to do it. So anything we can do that can help us to make this more affordable so that everyone can have access, I think is great. So I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The county council is adjourned until 6:00 p.m. Monday, November 20th, 2023. Please note, some members of the county council will be back here at 2:00 p.m. to meet the officials from the Maryland Department of Transportation to hear about the transportation efforts within Anarundel County. Members of the public are encouraged to attend. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to speak on these issues. See everybody back at 2:00, who can make it. Thank you.
2:00?